All right, everyone, tonight's meeting to order. You might need to have two. Quick questions.
I can't have time for this.
She can. Okay, start with the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, gentlemen. Stay in place. All right, first item on tonight's agenda is the approval of the agenda, tonight's agenda and meeting minutes from last month's meeting, February 18, 2025. Are there any, any adjustments, comments in regards to tonight's agenda or last month's meeting minutes? Well, here are any, I will ask for a motion to approve tonight's agenda as well as meeting minutes from last month.
How many want to approve the agenda, February 18, 2025? Or not the agenda, but the last, last month's meeting minutes, February 18, 2025, and this agenda, March 18.
Jim?
I'll second.
Okay, a motion to the second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Carry. Okay, the first item on tonight's agenda, as it is every month, is citizen comments. This time is for citizens wishing to address a pending commission on business other than what is listed in tonight's agenda items. Now, please keep in mind that this, this time is limited to three minutes per citizen. Anybody like to address it?
Can anybody bring a half a shoe to buy you to put across that window?
I don't see one.
That's already back to slide.
I have, right?
You know, I can't complain about the sun and it being lighter, is it?
Right.
It's not beneficial to these, to this room, but it's, it's nice to see.
With that statement, I'm going to agree on the charity, that some of it's not a problem. The rest of it is not a problem.
Any other, any other citizen comments for tonight? Okay, moving on. The next item on the agenda is communication, is Kurt here to us? Are we just going to take Kurt's letter or do we read it aloud or just move on?
Read aloud, you can read it aloud or you can just see it aloud.
Okay, yeah? Anybody on the board having any questions to bear to this, or should we just receive them five?
It's all fixed.
Yep. Five. Moving on, unfinished business. The renewable energy ordinance. Karen, I'll turn this one over to you.
Sure, so at the last meeting, you planned permission and asked me to continue to review your large solar energy system ordinance. And in the red, I have added additional language. A lot of this language aligns with what is being recommended by NTA and U of M when it comes to that work of ordinance. Providing setbacks, at least two hundred feet from the property line, and technicalations for government-owned facilities. On how mechanical equipment needs some kind of soundproofing around it to help with the sound. Decommissioning of the plans, emergencies, fire plans. So, how many questions left this language?
Everything in the red is new, correct?
Yeah, but what's in black is what is currently in your large sale.
So, a lot of new information, obviously, you provided us. We appreciate the effort, trying to put this thing down there. So, with this, I mean, we're, we're still at a point which we need to decide whether or not we're in a CRO or a work ordinance or leave the state, correct? Okay. And with this new language, what is, what is your recommendation, I mean, to adopt this language and then this would be the workable ordinance?
If township would like to have the opportunity for a developer to possibly work with them and still offer some protection to their citizens, I guess I would say I would recommend a workable ordinance. So, at least you can say that it's out there and, you know, it's likely that a developer might seriously consider using this to promote movement to the state because of those, the increased wait time that they have for a, an approval from the state. Whereas if they go through the township, the township kind of has to make a decision in a few months, or the state can take here. So, but again, that is something that township wants to do, you know, if you want to, say, you know, you took a stand and you're trying to work for the developer, but also protect your community, I think workable ordinance is a good way to do so. Again, you have to keep in mind that the developer can always choose to just go through the state process, why, at least you can say that you try and connect something on books.
And this gives them the opportunity to, to work with us, knowing that we have some things in place that would serve as guidelines to.
Now, in a lot of this language, like the decommissioning plan, direct perfection and works protection, they have to write all that into the state anyway. You know, when it comes to where are you asking more of, if the state's not asking, it's for increased setbacks, screening, some kind of sound muffling, whether it's for the sound defense or just reduced decibels. So, items like that. But a lot of this language is actually coming from our, what the state regulations were from.
And then, as the township operates, if we approve this, then it goes to the board for approval, correct?
I got a question, number five. Why is that asked?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
Anyways, the city property is to be returned to like a useful condition, equal to or better than the system prior to the installation of the system, right? So, let's say you get a, you know, five hundred, five hundred, they can farm, if they put up solar panels up and everything. But you're going to have, would that have somebody come out and say, what would it take to deconstruct this whole thing? Get rid of anything that's considered toxic waste and all that stuff? And that would might be put into a plan?
So, that is outlined in, in the section above R, before the issue of building permit, there has to be a performance guarantee.
Yeah, but how is it, how is it, you know, all depends on the size of the farm, so how was that derived? How was that number derived?
I believe in here it says third party.
No, it says, sorry, it says, or other suitable guarantee in the face amount of not less than one hundred percent of the estimated cost had determined by the township engineer to ensure removal of the facility or structure in accordance with decommissioning fine described law. So, the township engineer would determine the cost and then you would charge a guaranteed amount of one hundred percent of that cost.
Right, but we don't have township engineer, super. Do you do that? You will fight on your favorite farm?
We don't have five hundred favorite farms.
That's, that's not, but it sets, instead of chemicals in it.
Yeah, you don't have engineer, I understand, they can do it.
So, you can do it through the, all right, okay, that's right.
Does that need to be specific, state in here, township engineers are enough, if they're, if they're not, if they don't have the capability to do so, then they will.
Take the township engineer or engineer and consult everybody in the township.
I think that's pretty standard, like, I think the, the four of these agreements are the same.
And if they improve anything, they've got to put the name back to the way it was.
Yeah. That's the key.
Right.
Because what is all of this?
And that's the whole point of it, because you got to still let it be, you go access it and do it because they didn't.
Okay, good job.
And I said, now, to say what it's about.
Right. At least fifty dollars. Right. I know, it's a lake, everything you did here, I went through it pretty thoroughly and I'm happy with it. Appreciate your time with that. So, the next, the next thing would be to move forward with either adopting what you've done here or go back to the drawing board for.
Yeah, I'm deciding one direction.
Got you, okay. Does anybody else have any other questions on this?
Can we comment?
Uh, yes, yeah, at the citizen comments section at, at the end of the agenda.
Okay.
I'd love to make a motion to adopt it.
I would like to, what is our, how pressing is the time schedule on this? Because as, as much as I respect the five of us here, I'd like to get the opinion of our two missing members tonight, too, if at all possible. So.
If you guys would like to open another month, we have the input of the other two planning commissioners, it would be fine. Just be aware that if, if the planning commission chooses to do that, that we have to do a public hearing for it, which would take place the following month. And anytime you can, and then if the developer were to approach the township, you understand that you, or it would be set to the original language that you currently have.
Okay, so, with that being said, given that we have another, we'll have a month before the public hearing, and then at the public hearing, we can talk about it some more. I guess I'm good with, if the members present tonight would like to make a motion to adopt this or, or move forward with scheduling a public hearing, I'm for it. What else has anybody, I always say, you know, you know where I am, so we got time, we always still have time and process for, for Mike and Susan to get up to speed. Jim, do you have anything else on it, or?
I'd like to leave it alone.
Fair, I, I'm open to either way, whatever, whatever the board, again, has to decide.
I said it, you and I'm happy with the bracket.
Yeah, I'm happy with it. We satisfied. We waited this long. Right. I, I'm a hundred percent. I hope that there's a few behind, you know, or if I'm going to do this, so.
Yes.
Right. Well, would that, I mean, would that, with that being said, and if you, if you want the time, I'm happy with it, we'll, we'll postpone this for a month. If you do diligence, I'll reach out to, to Mike and Susan and have them review it, give them the exact next month, and we'll vote for that. That's good with that?
Yeah.
Do we need a, a motion to table this until next month? Okay. All right, I got a motion to table the, the new renewable energy ordinance until next month, April.
I'll make a motion, a motion, I'm two, a big motion, to wait till next month for this large solar energy system in Florida.
For the chief members to check as well.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Carry. Okay, moving on to new business, the next item on the schedule or on the agenda tonight is the public hearing for the special land use application for onsite concrete crushing by Greg LeBroy and Robert Clancy. Due to my property location and relevancy, I choose to recuse myself to avoid any conflict of interest. So, Jim, I'll let you carry on through this, and I'll return when we're done.
All right, do you want to go up?
Sure, so, yeah, so we received a special land use application for nine three four two Marine City Highway, which is located in the industrial district. The applicant is requesting special land use approval for concrete crushing to be conducted periodically alongside your existing business activities. This is after your operation will take place if they're at the site using a mobile crusher unit. This is a special land use in the industrial district, and it requires a criteria or nine standards to be met for the special land use. All uses which require license by state of Michigan, should be approved of such license to the planning commission. The applicant was able to provide license for the concrete crushing unit. Edible offshoot permission provided onsite for employees, customers, vendors, and the like anticipated to be on the site. Thirteen parts and space are currently enclosed on the site, giving the requirements the applicant proposed that exist in DAP or operated the equipment, which would not require any additional funding. All storage, disassembling, and similar activities shall be conducted within a completely enclosed building or shall be screened with view by a minimum of eight, eight foot height solid fence or wall, but not less than an item materials made of story. No storage should be permitted outside the boundaries of the disc of a building or house. The fence or wall shall be constructed materials approved by the planning commission as to their appearance, durability, effectiveness, as an experience during your offer. The site is surrounded by a sixteen six foot high chain of fence, the applicant should confirm the level of screening and stop sign height. If the required screen wall or fence will be over eight feet in height, it shall comply with the setback requirements for flexible buildings. The applicant must confirm the height of the screening to determine the setback requirements. Whenever a junkyard of its property is owned residential, commercial, or recreation slash open space, every boat shall be established outside the fence or wall along the entire common property line in accordance with the standards of section seventy-four of this ordinance. The screen belt applies to the property industrial uses adjacent to agricultural slash residential areas must provide a twenty-five foot wide NFC in belt with a three foot height or adjacent to any property line. NFC requires for every concern three, four year longer need, three foot firm, and one large facility to a street have to thirty feet within, within fifteen feet of the firm. This is required along the rear property line. The applicant currently has bulk category storage events in rear and heavy vegetation kind of events. However, may indicate only fifteen feet between the men's and property line. Unless the applicant can be able to criteria, appearance will be needed. All activity, all active uses, all active use areas on the site shall be paved or handily treated to eliminate any dust nuisance on the truck practice. A letter dated February seventh, twenty twenty-five from the applicant's attorney indicates that a larger truck is part of the crushing operation to control dust during the operation. A plan for proper handling, collection, primary, secondary, game of all fuels, oils, on vocal prints and similar gadgets, substances shall be equipped by the planning commission. The applicant must confirm the standard will be met. The operation of any equipment or activities which create anomalies or vibrations beyond the property line shall be limited to the hours of eight AM to sixteen AM on a day for Friday and eight AM to noon on Saturdays. With no hours of operations on Sundays and holidays. More than a hundred hours may be specified by the planning commission where necessary to impact the local properties. The applicant must confirm that this standard will be met, including the duration and frequency of the operation. And lastly, the site shall have direct access to all seasons paid to major peripheries and their standard is met. Based on what we have received so far from the applicant, I recommend that the planning commission does the additional information on the following standard rating, outstanding items for special land use in order to determine if the standards can be met. One, to confirm the depth of screening and stop sign height. Two, ensure that the court agrees well and manage the rear of the property, avoiding the applicant's involvement of parcel or tangorance. Three, confirm capacity material with the purpose of operation, how they will be handled in the paint. And four, provide the anticipation and frequency of the concrete crushing operation.
Now, do you want to give your last?
Best I'm hearing on the attorney on behalf of the petitioner, in light of the fact that your chairman recused himself, you're down to four members, and two people are absent, so we would ask if this could continue to your next meeting? Because if we want to get approval, we have to get four out of the seven votes, and we only have four people here, and.
Four is four, you can majority vote.
No, you, you, you can have four, let me finish. You can have four to do the meeting, but that's a forum. But you have to get a majority of the board members to vote affirmatively for the person's request.
Out there, I think the person.
No, I think it's before the planning commission to, there was a case I was involved with that went to the Michigan Court of Appeals, out of St. Peter County, Marine City, Detroit Bulk Storage versus the city of Marine City, and, and Levy Company, where it went to the circuit court twice, when there was a vote. Some of the people had to recuse themselves, a couple of people didn't show up, and the vote was two to one. Judge Telly ruled, and the court of appeals affirmed that it had to be a majority of the total board, not just the total majority of the people that happened to be in the meeting. And since we're the petitioner, I think we have the right to ask for continuance. We're not saying close the public hearing, and I'm not sure that you have got the motion to open it, but assuming that you did, as the petitioner, to preserve my lines to process rights, I would ask that we continue to your April fifteenth meeting, which presumably those other two people would be here and to hear the total rendition of the people involved.
With all due respect, I don't want to enter the litigation and maybe differ from the city township, but I think there was something attached to the zoning act that required a majority of the board to vote affirmatively. But, I remember preserving process, the petitioner's requesting that, that they were, the certain business commissions authority to do that. However, it's been scheduled for a public hearing, so if the district wants to make a presentation and then sit down, that's fine. District chooses not to make a presentation and sit down, that's fine, the public hearing wants to be opened.
Yeah, yeah, I don't object to people in the public that came to make their statements. I'll just ask if you continue it, and I'll make my statement at that time, once you have two more members of your planning commission present.
All right, I got a question, so. We, we have a public hearing, we paid that, right? So, how does the next one read if all the people that showed up for this one are not there, can't make it next month?
Congress of the public?
Yes.
They can have a statement today?
Have statements.
Absolutely. Absolutely positively. The public hearing must be open, and anybody who wants to speak will have that here to speak, absolutely positively.
All right, so.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with that.
Okay, that's fine. So, the next question would be, do we table first or do we open the public hearing first?
At this point, the district is saying, I don't make a presentation, so let the person sit down.
If we want to table it after, we can do that.
Thank you.
All right.
So, you can open the public hearing.
Yeah, I got to make a motion.
Make a motion to open the public hearing for special land use on site concrete crushing, crushing for nine three four two Marine City Highway.
Second, you need a second? You need a second? All right, it's open, it's open, so.
So, you all voted for it?
Yep.
Yep.
Yes, and I'm hearing on, and we have the property owner, petitioner, given the fact that you only have four members here, you normally have seven, one person recues themselves, and understandably so, we would ask that the public hearing be conducted tonight, but our aspect that it be tabled will have noted the public who came to voice their concern, their input, that it be continued to your April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting at seven PM at this facility. Thank you.
I'm going to wait till next month, to say, we have to say, to say it now. I'll be here next month.
It's completely up to you, because this is a public hearing, so you have every right to take.
Yeah, but it should have been voted on tonight, we all came here thinking it was supposed to be voted on tonight.
Well, they still want it, they have to take it again, it's up to the plan.
He already said he can.
Well, no, it's still.
They got voted on, they tabled, right?
I just said that's fine, ready for a break, right?
That's their request, it's up to the plan.
But I understand his request, so he wants to push it, you know, he wants more votes on the end, so he's not, he's not to go for it, is that, oh, yes, right?
And you wish if somebody don't show up next, next month, there are a couple people.
Well, and that might not be tabled twice. You know, I consider, I understand his, his side, I don't think that was. Anybody else want to speak?
Anybody that can't come here next month?
It's like, how that's not crushing without that property, so I wait till they have. So, we're going to close the public hearing?
No, absolutely not. Well, they had a chance to speak, but if you were even considering it, table it, and request that the petition will help here to.
I just want to wait for everybody else to begin.
I don't have a problem with it. It's unfortunate that we're not able to do it tonight, but ultimately, it affects his business of whether he can do it or not, so he's saying we can wait another month.
Well, the P was only.
You can't.
From what I.
You've got to mark it.
So, wait a minute, didn't he just say something? Did you just say something?
Cool, me?
Yeah.
I asked.
I'm going to wait till next, next month, we've been coming through this, how many months?
He came here to speak, though.
Yeah.
And I was just seeing, I know why you're here, that's why I asked.
But any other? Or is it? If you'd like to hear me, the, the. I'll, 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 say your name, and, and speak.
Thank you.
With all the time we're given.
Sorry, sir. That'd be a lot of time, only fourteen months ago. So, where can we get the information that you guys have? Because in there periodically, crush stone, how often do these happen? Because I'm only here today for the people that were here when this first started, six, eight months ago, whatever it was, that live right there. And I, I don't think it's right, I'm at the corner in Lindsay at Holmes, doesn't affect me really, maybe some air quality, but the lady that was here that night, the gentleman, she was with you, but we're concerned about their horses and the hay. So, anyway, how often do they plan on crushing rock?
We've got to get one of our questions, so. We'll get that next month. Are we able to still ask some questions this month, too? Since, since you want to, here's a question, so. Since you want to table the meeting, are we able to ask questions periodically, you know, that kind of stuff, that's worded out on mic and that stuff? We can do it this month?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, so, we can still, is anybody else that wants to speak?
I'm sure I'll take a question later, if I do, I'll.
Okay.
So, we're based, or me, anyway, is based away, the other gentleman has to say?
All right, that's information that has yet to be given to us.
All right, she, she had a number of questions on her, on her sheet, you want to, want to address them?
I don't have her sheet. Do I have her?
It was for a report, Mr. King, or something?
Oh, the last one, then. Okay.
Says that thing should confirm, not that it's screening, it's got a lot of light at one moment.
See, I just prefer to answer all of them, once we through our presentation, as we actually, assuming that we keep the public hearing open, we table it for that time.
Well, let's see if we can answer some of these questions, because that periodically, when, that's one I just don't know, which is being done. So when, when this plan, we give him some kind of a, a, a planning thing? When you say periodically, so he can do this throughout the year, anytime he wants to, is that what you want to approve?
Generally, yes. In your ordinance, it says you can operate Monday through Friday, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 or 5:00, and he can comply with that, and on Saturday, from Saturday morning to noon, he can comply with that. No Sundays, no holidays. But how the concrete crushing, crushing operation basically works, there's multiple elements that go into it. It's the size of the stockpile of materials that have to be crushed, the stockpile size as to what's already been crushed, inflow of materials, outflow of materials, and when the employees that can operate these machinery are available and are not working on site projects off the property. So that's why it's impossible to say that it would be the first week of February, March, April, May, June, it could be the second week, it's periodic. And I have represented other people with crushers, and we've agreed that those time limits, Monday through Friday, are reasonable, same way to Saturday, and go crushing on the holidays, and he can live with that. But it's impossible for him to say that particular week of the month, because it's a multi-faceted part of his business.
So he's doing this for his own purpose, and using the rock for his own thing, or he's doing it just to crush rock for everybody?
No, he's just doing it for himself, he's not, there's no sales for the people, he gets the material from his job sites, crushes it, and uses it either on that site or the next site, and a lot of times, when you're doing a brand new piece of property, you need the larger stone at the entranceway from the road, keep the mud from being dragged out onto the street, and that's what they generally use it for, for the base and things of that. The, so, it depends on his job site, but he's not, the people that sell the retail, they just like, a relative of his has a crushing operation, clean, clean concrete on Little Mac and Roosevelt, they sell on a retail basis, and if you're a truck driver, you go there on a regular basis, they have your semi-traction trailer already weighed empty, they load you, when you come out, you go over the scales, they know how much it weighs, that's what your bill is. If I go there for the first time, they're going to weigh me going in and weigh me going out, but that's not part of his operation, he doesn't have a scale there, so he's not doing that. The air quality permit comes from the state of Michigan, and how the crusher basically operates, you have a water wagon with a pump, it shoots the water into the machine, the crushing takes place internally within the machine, and I believe I gave you some insight as to a case, Justice Hill Township, Mr. Anderson's firm, our president, and we got the circuit judge to come out and look, and if somebody put the N R to look, the air quality standards were met, the noise standards were met.
Is he doing this inside a building?
No, nobody does it inside a building, it's just, it's irrational, right? No, that's, you do it outside, like, did you try on Marine City Highway, on the Iger Township side, there's.
So did he come to you tonight, knowing that he or us have the setbacks rate, and the proper heights and everything, and that of his property? Is he, is he ready with that, or do you know that answer?
Yeah, the part of your ordinance and the planning report says you can't have a pile higher than eight feet, but if you go to Grasso or Sharpier, you go to any place that crushes concrete, nobody has a stockpile of pre-cycle materials or after-cycle that's eight feet high. So our basic position is that's an unreasonable requirement, the, because you just can't operate that way, and nobody in the industry does, and nobody operates with a, a building, because quite a few companies that have these machines have them on a portable basis, and they take them from job site to job site and crush right there where the concrete's coming out. So a lot of times, I've done big jobs for M D, companies that do it, they have an onsite right off I N B four, or I N B five, wherever they're working, as long as they have an adequate water supply, either from a fire hydrant or water wagons, that's how they do it.
So you're saying that not from there would be the height of the.
Well, you can't make, decide.
How tall are you?
Right, it's not right.
Yes, no.
Right, we can't, I'm ready, I can. So, my question to this view is, does the planning commission have the right to grant some variance on that issue, or do we have to go to the Z B A? Because if we have to go to the Z B A, we'll go to the Z B A.
Go to mine.
But, what's that?
I'm on that one.
Well, that's good.
Part of the problem you have.
You're flying for.
Is, if you have a, a space large enough to meet, where you have the materials spread out over a distance to meet the height requirement, now you're talking about bringing it about the lower to move, so now you're going to have more dust, more noise. You know what I mean, so if you've got it eight foot tall, a hundred foot long.
Well, this, I think it reaches eight feet, this is eight feet, go to any place, nobody has.
Well, that's just part of our requirement, cool top.
But I'm just saying that from a realistic standpoint, it's not realistic for this type of business. And when your ordinance says you can have a building that's either thirty or forty feet high, you allow for higher structures, and if you just write down the screen here, like Delto's facility, there's a pile of materials in the back that's, I didn't go over it, but driving by, it looks a lot higher than eight feet, and the, it just.
A concrete?
No, I don't know what it is, you can't tell from, no, but it's on, and they have like, construction operation out of that.
I have a question regarding the height, is, being, being a mobile unit, I got to imagine that the, this comes off of a conveyor, right?
Correct.
So what's the height limit on the conveyor? Because that's going to have a maximum, just so we have an idea of what we're talking for. What do you, what do you mean by height limit? I mean, it can only make the height of so hot, correct?
Correct.
So what's that number?
It's right in that thirty, thirty-five foot range.
Okay. Just curious, I have no idea. It works out for every.
Well, because the conveyor, when it comes out, right here, comes out of the hopper, drops onto a conveyor, the conveyor lifts it, and stockpiles it, and then it fans out.
Yeah, but that's, like, conveyor's got the maximum.
Oh, right, yeah.
So the pile will be higher than that, obviously.
Correct.
I just wanted to know what that number.
Can you describe vegetation in the back of your property?
Sure, yeah, I mean, we have bulk storage bins in the back of the property, they are eight foot tall, and we actually have a pit fill, we store certain materials in those that we use on a daily basis, we have, from the property line to the back of the bins, it's fifteen feet, and then from the top of the bin, it slopes off of the property line. It's, it's vegetation, so it's grass, and that goes the length of the property.
So here's some photographs of it, this is the back end, this is looking from a drone, looking east and south west of the direction, this is the, the back end, looking in a southeast direction, and then this.
Trees are.
It's just like there's whales in this vegetation here, and this is the bin that he has, that he puts materials in, that are labeled as to what they are, and then this is his concrete operation, right now. And I'll provide similar pictures here for the next meeting, that way you can.
So that brush that's there, count on the set.
The, the brush, it most can, the other person's property.
Right. Yeah.
And then, this is an overall aerial property, this is my client's property, this is where the crushing operation takes place, these are the day-to-day parcels, this is where your chairman's property is.
You know, we may have a freedom of use.
Yeah, I know, that's still, there's safety issues with that, but.
Right. You know, I don't know what your days to, your, 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 your.
Minutes, yeah.
No, no.
You want my?
I meant your opinion.
For, well, he's, in fact, for, I'm not going to say nothing, but when you open it back up with the comments, you'll guys will see what you guys did a month ago, what issue we have right now, with T L M.
Not this far.
Not the.
I understand it's not this far.
But, 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 but you bring it out right now for the height, you'll show your images, what's, what's it going to look like?
All right, I guess, you got any other questions, still?
With the, with the water being used, where's the runoff going?
It's basically consumed in the construction, in the crushing operation, because it's misted into the machine.
Okay.
So it goes on the product as it's being crushed, when it comes out on the conveyor, the mist goes with it, it goes into a hopper, then to the conveyor to be stocked.
So it's not run off the sides or the back?
No, because you have to mist it to control the dust, it's not like a fire hydrant, it's where the fire.
Okay.
And quite often, there's usually two conveyor belts, one to take the bigger materials, the one to two inch, and one to take the smaller stuff.
All right, anybody else want to talk?
So we got closed up? You're not close to vote, you voted table, you're not, you're not close to public hearing.
I need table, man, we got voted on.
But can I ask you a question? Can you, or the, the attorney, does the planning commission at Casco have the authority to grant variances, or just the Z B A?
Just the Z B A.
And Karen, they lost a lot, didn't they?
Yeah.
It was embarrassing. Eight, four, or eleven, it would be.
Oh, you can't, no.
Where are you going to begin?
Yeah, we can go to the Z B A now if you want to. Right. The other thing, too, is, the, if you want to see the site in person, call Robert's office and make an appointment, you can come in, and somebody will tour you in the back. And the office number is seven two five, eight eight oh one.
Five eight six, or you?
Five eight six. And of course, if Karen wanted to come, we'd be happy to join, I've been there more than one. But don't wear your, don't wear your suit or your high heels.
I'll put my mask on then.
So will the motion table?
Would it be searched, please?
Yeah, what's your, what's your feeling? What you guys said, the table, then for next month?
Yes.
Yes, serious.
Make a motion to table this until next month, meeting April 15?
Okay, you're intending to public hearing, right?
I'm intending to public hearing.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. All set there? Moving on? Next item on the agenda is report from committees, and reports from the Z B A, Joe. Anything from the board, Gina?
Uh, no, that's left from Joe. And this is from, this is for the Casco Township Board, from the Casco Township Board, on March 11, approved resolution 2025-07, which allows the township to apply for a Michigan D N R passport grant for design and construction of a playing area at the Casco Township, Albert Park. The amount of the grant is $140,000. If successful in obtaining, the township will refund, will be responsible for contributing $35,000, which is 25% of the project cost. D N R passport grants are funded by Michigan drivers when they elect to have passport under vehicle license tabs, which allows them to access to Michigan State Parks, D N R sites, and others named home recreation of facilities. The money gathered from these passport license tabs are used to develop a renovation of facilities across the state. So if you get it or get $140,000, my decision is glad that we have to get it.
So we're going to have to pay to go into that park?
No, sorry, what, what she's saying is that the D N R passport grants are funded by people who elect to pay for the recreational passport under license tab.
Yes.
That's where that D N R money comes from, $115,000 that it will get from the state comes from that fund.
When you get your.
We don't have to have that sticker to get in there, I mean, I have to have it, but other people don't.
It, it won't be required, no, that's state part, so, but we do get to share a portion of the money that comes in.
And also from the state, oil, gas, royalties, comes to that grant money, from the moving.
I'm not sure about that.
Yeah, I'm not. They could check it out.
Okay.
They'll reach for your pocket or coin or another.
Okay, anything else from the board, Gina?
No.
All right. Uh, the next item on the agenda will be planners update, Karen?
Yeah, I provided a memo regarding, it says, I think, planning commissioners to take a look at, um, these are issues that have come out here recently, uh, or that I've seen in the past that I think we need to address, um, first is, we've done a few home modifications and then we worked through it, um, there's some language in there that I think I can change, um, there's stipulation from home application where we have to, if it's a permitted use, identically with a permitted use, we don't have a public hearing for it, it's something that's permitted, planning commission can review it, but we don't, uh, gather the citizen comments, but for our home application ordinance, we require mailing to neighborhood residents, so they can accommodate and listen to the campified comments, and so I'm wondering, planning commissions would like to hear from the neighbors on home modifications, that maybe we should move it to a special man use in all the districts where it's listed, and that would also get the planning commission, uh, the power and the authority to exercise some limitation, let's say for employees' hours of operations, stuff like that, so something I can, I should consider. Also, Brenna and I have reviewed site plan procedures, procedures.
Uh, the next item on the agenda would be the planner's update. Karen?
Yeah, I provided a memo regarding some notices I think the planning commission should take a look at. These are issues that have come out here recently, or that I've seen in the past that I think we need to address. First is, we've done a few home occupations, and as we work through it, there's some language in there that I think might change. There's a stipulation from home occupation where we have to, if it's permitted use, identically with permitted use, we don't have a public hearing for it. It's something that's permitted. The planning commission can review it, but we don't gather specific comments. But for our home occupation ordinance, we require mailing to neighboring residents so they can come, they can listen, and they can modify comments. And so I'm wondering, the planning commission would like to hear from the neighbors on home occupations, that maybe we should move it to a special man use in all the districts where it's listed. And that would also get the planning commission the power and authority to exercise some limitation, let's say for noise, hours of operation, stuff like that. So something the planning commission should consider. Also, Brenna and I have reviewed site plan, who procedures. Right now, the ordinance, and you guys have heard, that has something like five sets of plans to be kept on record, and that's a little bit much. On top of that, there's requirements for a planner's stamp and a planning commission's stamp, and not opposed to having a stamping process, but I think we need to make it streamlined and actually more modernized in how things are actually going into office, considering that we're getting so much more digital information now. And the other ordinance is the sub-storage warehouses. Right now, it's required someone else have a warehouse that they have an employee on site. And I don't, I'm not opposed to that, but because these systems are becoming so automated, in lieu of having an employee on site, if they have an automated system, I think we should have, places like that, an option.
Karen, I have a copy of your memo.
We'll sign it.
Did you write it? This, and I struck, I have, or you ran a copy, and everybody else could?
It was behind us.
So Karen, can you explain to the board, what is the process of like to make changes to these, in particular, three ordinances that you outlined? What's that process of?
So we would review the original ordinance, we would discuss what kind of changes we would like. The planning commission does want to move forward on any language changes, track those changes, once the planning commission is satisfied with changes that remain, and we would have a whole, a public hearing, and it would be adopted through the public hearing.
So we just have to put it on the agenda? We'll have to put it on the agenda?
Right, if you want to pursue the changes.
I think you make a valid point, Karen. I think there's some things here that need to be reviewed. I would ask the board to review these three in particular over the next month, and we all have a copy of the ordinance handbook, so if there's anything else in there that you think of, or see, or can identify that may also need to be reviewed. Let's compile those things, and then next meeting, let's talk about the language in which it should be changed to and move forward. I agree, Karen, some of these don't apply as they should. So we make, go ahead and make a motion to review ordinances at the April meeting, correct? Making a motion?
I make a motion to review section eighty-four seventy-five on eighty-eight, April meeting.
A second.
Okay, a motion in a second to review three particular ordinances that are currently on the book. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? Karen? Thank you, Karen. Any other updates from the planner? The next item on the agenda is citizen comments. I have citizens to keep in mind, this is, this time is for any comments relative to agenda items that we discussed tonight. At this time, we'll open that up.
I got a question. I'm sorry to hear that you don't retail crushed concrete on your competition is good. I'm getting Steve Grasso now, the only one in town. You know, as a consumer, question, concrete, competition is good. You know, I mean, I would go to Grasso, they're close in St. Clair or Green City there, you know what I'm saying? Competition is good. I'm sorry that you don't retail it. My own opinion.
We don't need them to retail it.
Why not?
Because they just don't.
You can retail it.
There's two places right across the street.
Certainly. If you need to retail it right here, well, they'll show that at least the...
Please, if we're gonna have comments, please...
I have a question for it. I would like to see retail. Competition to the others, competition in private township. Did he get put through all this like you, when you come and just say a twenty-six mile road?
I can't see that.
Some people's standards are different, Jim.
What?
Some people's standards are different.
Please, if you guys wanna have a private conversation, more than welcome you to do that nonsense.
But I'm making my...
I agree. I was there, sir.
Okay.
And I appreciate your comment.
Yes.
Anything else anybody have?
Be kind. I mean, going back to this, take that old jeans. Huh? I mean, I think you're on my life. Our brand is eighteen fifty-three, that don't matter. You see Casco Township, a zone to the community. Can we put placards under there listing all these news and those cans and cans through our zoning ordinances? Can we put a plaque under "Not Quite Communist Yet"? It might sound rude, but it's not. It's these hurdles that you gotta jump. You can get rid of two services and ordinances. People are wrong different than tackle. You put them up, you better have good fences. You need some laws, ordinances. I had a neighbor north of me twenty years ago, he moved from Harrison Township by South Ridge. He says, "I come to Casco, the zoning ordinance is Harrison Township is this thing." He said, "I come to Casco, there's this thing." You know what I'm saying? Heck, real people. This township needs real good luck at our zoning ordinances, and try getting rid of conservatives and still people live. That's my statement. You own your property, pay the taxes, telling you you wanna do something.
Sir, I would strongly encourage you to run for a position within local government.
I would love that too, yeah. I would consider being, I would love to be on the zoning board of the field.
Grants it.
Are they?
Grants it.
Yeah.
I've got out of my mind, I'll share with anybody. I don't have any teeth left in my mouth, I never lost any environment, but I will speak my piece.
Appreciate the comments, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to address any items, comments on this agenda?
My name's Jim Zal, I come at five-eight-seven nine Church Road. I'm just here to express my concern about non-crushing, because I'm going through it right now, what the residents have to go through when you guys do approve this, also close to residential. If I may, I have a couple short videos to show you of my house shaking, my window shaking, my wall shaking. I'd like to show you just to see what you guys are impacting residents when you approve it, this close to a residential area. A couple short videos, I learned a few things too. I mean, the stockpile's gonna be over eight foot, or well, it's a part of my house, I mean. And then for the green belt, you said it's just back of the property, does that apply for sides, or just...
It's wherever it's adjacent to the non-industrial property. So whatever that border, where that township is...
So, you know, they do have storage, which should be changed, but there is no, nothing else, no blocking that to my residential property at all. That's an actual judgment, if you guys are willing.
Can I ask you, where are you on the...
Yes, we don't have access.
George?
Yeah, here's, where's the guy's... I was, it's kind of secret. It's on the second floor, the second... Yeah, I just want to, still, for the future, this one's obviously a group, I'm not trying to shut anything down, I just want to, so you guys don't, because it is gonna get certified for it. I just want to get simple work going for the residents, if you don't mind.
John gets outlined, I do appreciate that. He saw it the first time, you know, he saw my whole share of things. I don't know if you did it up to the king, John, but it didn't help, he said it really
helped around.
Yeah.
I know John's seen it, opened it actually at my house, and I do appreciate your concern, but it's still there. Yeah. So if you don't like it, it's my son's, I apologize.
It's so rough, it's a lot better. From the mirror, it's like...
It's like, it's flat. Just so you guys can see, I have a paper, did you have?
Well, I like the, how's the noise?
Noise is, I always say, noise is better than the last machine.
It's noise, it's... What, like, does it affect us in the containers there, or what?
Once he, John did it, once they went in front of it, when they first set up, they did move and add another container, did help. There's possibly, we did try, I'm saying, I didn't try. It's still, it's the vibration now, my whole house is shaking.
So it's not noise, that does?
The noise is still looking, don't get me wrong. Yeah, it was dust, yeah.
We need to know where it's moving, that, when that is made bad enough.
Crossroads, across... We sold it. Now we got flexible, we're not quite as great. They don't permit, you know, when you talk to the gas, right? I mean, I just... Do I, I see you on the...
Shaking, right?
My husband, that was just... So the water, you know, it's... So it's vibrations, that was a problem.
I'm raising all the tractor, it's shaking, so...
That was obviously, like, I wouldn't know, but they...
So if you're concerned, maybe more than vibration, right outside, you don't know it, I mean, that's what the question was, just, I'm sorry, I apologize. Just get that note figured around, what's the noise, what's the noise like from inside your house?
When the windows shut, that's not true, I will be right there. Windows shut.
It's not, it's... Is it better?
Yes.
So the damage, I mean, it's... I think it's the back of shoes that I took off my rubber shoe, like, that's a bad one. Whether it's impact pressure to job pressure, I don't think so. It's like, it's a lot larger, it's a static machine, it's a job pressure. It's a bad one. It's a bad one. It's a bad one. It's a bad one. It's a job pressure.
Yeah, it's like a, it's a model, it's a problem, it's a bad problem. It's hard to control.
So much better collecting control.
Sorry, we...
I was...
Sorry, I told everyone, I'm over, it's a lot of trouble. We're trying to, we're trying to, we're trying to...
So now, you're...
They believe we're the train.
You know, it's like, it's like, it's like...
So should we have...
It's not like, you do, you...
Did it by a great horse, the person? You know, it was...
My best concern is, I don't want to like that, obviously. We have all these, that's the issue, it's not...
I don't like that effect of this now.
I don't... Ex...
Just want to raise your attention. Sorry, it's a small, it's a hot topic, obviously. What's the...
Inconservately, so, but... All right, thank you, Jim. Do we have any other system comments? Okay. Next item on the agenda would be adjournment. Making a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting at eight oh four.
A motion in a second to adjourn tonight's meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Any...